This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the work session on January 25th, 2021, the City of Albany. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The roll call, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Counselors Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Novak. Olson. Smith.
Here.
Three counselors present, Your Honor.
So we're missing, um, Novak. Has anybody been in touch with Counselor Olson or Counselor Novak?
I think Matilda was on a little bit ago and then left.
Like everybody else here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Mayor, I know Holly's been talking with Counselor Olson while I was trying to figure it out for the rest of the group. I just told her to have him try to just get back on and start from scratch.
Thank you.
Yes, there's some, there's some feedback, excuse me, there's some feedback, so.
I sound like a wind tall. I hear wind.
Yeah, I'm in the AV closet of the council chambers.
You are, okay. Lots of server. It was your fault. Okay, that's good.
It's come down to that? Oh, no.
Peter, fix his accommodations.
He likes neighbors, so he left.
So we do have business from the public and we're in the packet for the city counselors. And so we had the public comment from Steve Reynolds regarding Sharon Canopas buying for the remaining two years of the old, the War II spot. That Madeline McGregor submitted a comment on Amanda Datt recommendation. And we had Deb Flagman, Flaggen, she put feedback for the Parks Master Plan. And Kevin Mask, I haven't talked to Kevin in years about the Parks Master Plan. And Nancy Agreement also made a comment on the return of her award for the Human Relations Council. So that's in the packet. And so the first up on the agenda, we're not going to read those to you. If you'd like it, they'll be in the agenda packet once we're done. The Burkhardt Reservoir Proposal, Chris Bailey is on page two to four. It's a discussion. Well, Chris, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So there is a memo in your packet. I'm not going to repeat the whole memo. But essentially, this is a property that the city owns on Burkhardt Street off of Salem Avenue. And we received the property when we purchased the water system from Pacific Power back in the 1980s. The, it has a concrete reservoir on the property that was built in 1947. I would classify their reservoir as extremely sturdy. It's very thick reinforced concrete. It's a large structure and, yeah, sort of dominates the property there. This area of Burkhardt Street is residential area and the property is zoned for residential medium density. The reservoir has been out of service since the 1990s. It's physically disconnected from the system. And we have a minimal amount of maintenance that we do every year on the property just to keep it looking tidy and keep the fence fencing up. Every now and then, we've had some interest in the property because it is in a medium density residential zone, which is very attractive. But the costs associated with dealing with the reservoir have typically discouraged people in the past. We've gotten estimates to demolish the reservoir and fill the hole that will be left that are in the several hundred thousand dollar range. So it's a little bit of a discouragement to make better use of this property. Well, recently, we were approached by a couple of people who had interest in the property. One of those parties has decided not to pursue the property, but we have today Matt Wellington from Civil West Engineers, who has a presentation to talk about potentially acquiring the property and what they are thinking of doing with it. So Matt, I think I'll turn it over to you. I think you can, should be able to share your screen.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chris. Hello, Mayor and council, city staff. It's nice to see those of you that I know and it's, and it's great to meet those of you that I don't get. My name is Matt Wellington. I'm with Civil West Engineering. I'm a part owner. My partner in this venture is Paige Deemer. He's the owner of North Core USA, a construction company. I don't see him on the line, although I know he was trying to get on earlier. We have submitted an offer to the city for the purchase of 370 Burkhardt Street. I can, I'm going to try and share my screen so I can give you guys a preliminary layout and some visuals of what we are hoping to do. Just a second.
By any chance, have you sent us copy for slides to Matt Harrington? Okay, you have it there.
I have not, but I, but I will.
I'd appreciate that.
Okay. The first, first slide, like, forward here. This is the property. You can see on the, on the left-hand side of the property, the big, big giant concrete structure. It's like Chris was saying, about ten feet out of the ground and buried ten feet in the ground with, with walls that are, that are up to three feet thick. Red line that's there, the setbacks along the property and, and what we really like to do is, is to put between six and eight units of one or two bedroom affordable housing. We, we hope to be able to do this by, by utilizing the existing structure in place and, and making it look more, more residential and building on, on top of it. That's our, our primary goal. If, if that doesn't work out, then, then we're confident that we can do the demolition of that at a, at a price point that will allow us to, to be able to build the units and, and offer them for affordable housing. That's, that's basically what our, what our plan is. I'm happy to answer any questions that.
Counselors, any questions?
Questions of staff, not.
Any staff, any questions?
Yeah, go ahead, Counsel Kupczynski.
Chris, what, or maybe Sean needs to get involved in this. What would be the liability of the city going forward at any point in time if, if and when we sell the property? Because of existing conditions that may be there underlying, et cetera, et cetera?
Though the city won't have any liability, once they, once they transfer title to the property, they won't have any liability on it unless it was some type of an environmental superfund site or something to that effect. This site has been, my understanding, Chris can, can weigh in on this too, that this site does not have that, that situation, that, that kind of a, of a threat on it. And, and I believe the site's been, a lot of stuff been tested on the site already, including the building. I think, I, I believe several people have looked at this building in the past to do something with it and determined that, you know, it wasn't financially feasible. But at the same time, I, I think that there's, uh, there's no liability when it comes to like a contamination of the soil or something like that on that property. And then the city could also put an agreement together that when they sell the property that, you know, relieve them of that liability and the people who buy it will, will take that responsibility.
Indemnifying the city, I think, would be critical.
Yeah.
So Counsel Kupczynski, we have had a limited hazmat assessment done. And the reservoir itself is just concrete with rebar. There might be some epoxy in there that needs to be looked at more closely. But our consultant report just says that there's a small little office on top, a little pump house. And there's a tiny, there are relatively small amount of asbestos there in the window putty that would need to be dealt with. But it's really minor in the grand scheme of things. In terms of the cost to deal with the structure, that would not be very serious.
As long as there's, as long as there's language in the potential contract to do what Sean was talking about, then I'm all okay with it.
Anything else, counselors?
Yes.
Counsel Johnson.
Yeah, this is Bessie. And, and Matt, I, and this has nothing to do with you buying it, but the, your use for, you say that it's going to be, what, five or six affordable housing units? A much overly used statement. What, what is your idea of a affordable house, of an affordable housing unit?
What I'm thinking is a, is an attached one or two bedroom unit. What I had shown there was, was a couple of units up front and then three or four units in the back. Again, attached one or two bedroom units that, that would be priced in the, you know, quote unquote affordable area. And, and I'm not sure what that, what that's going to end up being yet, but, uh, but that's the goal.
Yeah, that is such a, such an overused, overused term, uh, you know. You have to build it to make a profit and you can't build it for nothing unless you want to buy, build a cardboard structure. And so, you know, when you say affordable, and, and it's not just you, it's just so overused anymore. You know, are we looking at assisted housing or what? You know, I, I'm just always confused about that because you can't build a house for nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Johnson. Excuse me, can you please stop sharing?
Yep, I can.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just make one more comment, this is Chris.
Go ahead, please.
So we've had properties in the past where the burden or the barriers to overcome development on the property made the purchase or the sale of it from the city's perspective very difficult. And, you know, this is a property that, well, A, it's, it's an eyesore in the neighborhood. We haven't used it as part of the water system in over 20 years. And, you know, sort of conceptually would be good to put it to good use for the city. And if we sold it, it would get back on the tax rolls. There's a potential for a little bit of property tax income there, potentially to the city as opposed to us owning it where there's none.
Yeah, and Chris, I have no, no problem with the sale whatsoever. So I think we should go through with it.
Yeah, I just want to paint a picture for everyone. So, you know, the council is under no burden to sell the property. You know, you can do whatever you want to in terms of the sale. The way it was purchased, we don't have any strings attached as far as recovering the amount it was purchased for or anything like that. I don't even know how we would figure that out. But, um, so just to give you a little bit more to chew on, it's, we have, the city has in the past offered properties at less than their market value just in, to try to help the potential new buyer move forward with their project. You certainly don't have to do that. But, you know, the, the cost that we got to knock down the reservoir and fill it was over $400,000, which is really a big dollar amount for a property of this size in this location. So, you know, the idea of selling it is, would be helpful to us. We wouldn't have to maintain it. It would be helpful to the city to get it back, put into good use for the community. But probably nobody is going to want to spend $400,000 plus the full price of the property. So just putting that out there for you to think about. And we'll come back to you at a future date and get your decision on what to do with this. And if you have other questions, you can certainly let me know or, or talk with Matt at Civil West, so.
Thank you. Counselor Olson just showed up. It looks like he's on the phone. I wonder if he has any comments for us or is he just calling the number? Counselor Novak, do you have anything?
Thank you.
Counselor Olson.
Sorry, I was muted. No, thank you.
Nothing. You have anything, Counselor? Thank you, thank you, Counselor Novak. Do you have anything, Counselor Olson?
I don't know where we are in the meeting.
We're still on the.
Connected.
We're on the Burkhardt property.
On which?
Burkhardt property. Burkhardt. It should be the first thing on the agenda. Is the reservoir?
Oh. No, I don't suppose we can ask who's wanting to buy that, can we?
He's actually here on the meeting with us.
Counselor, it's Matt Wellington, who's from Civil West Engineering, and then Paige Deemer, who owns North Core Construction. And their, their concept is to put some multifamily units on their attached units.
On the existing structure or are they going to tear it down?
Matt, I'll throw it back over to you.
Uh, yeah, our, our initial plan is to try and do it on the existing structure, but if that doesn't work, we're gonna, we're confident we can tear it down affordably and, and be able to build it back up.
I think you could, you could probably build a skyscraper on top of that foundation.
We're kind of counting on it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Any other counselors have anything, Counsel Johnson?
Sorry for the interruption here, but I just couldn't manage to get in.
Well, Counsel Olson, we're all having problems, Counsel Olson. No problems. So, Chris Bailey, Chris Bailey, did you have anything else for us regarding this property?
No, we'll just, I'll work with Matt and we'll probably be back to a future regular council meeting for you to take action. And in terms of a vote and whether or not to move forward with the sale.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Somebody say something. Oh, Counsel Johnson.
Yeah, I was just wondering, Chris, would it, I mean, would it be helpful if the council say, yeah, we're all in favor of doing this? So that, you know, you could, I mean, because it'd be kind of hard for Matt and his partners to go forward. And then, you know, if they had the idea that we're all in favor of it, which I am, it's an eyesore. And I think if there's can be something done with it, I think it's great, but I just wondering if that would help.
Yeah, I think conceptually, the only thing standing in the way would be, I think their offer might be less than the full market value price that's listed on the Lynn County Assessors Report. And so, you know, conceptually, would the city council be willing to entertain an offer like that? Or if you feel strongly that we need to get the full amount of the value on the Lynn County Assessors Report, then that might be a little bit more of a hang up. And we, Matt and I would need to discuss that further.
Counselor Novak.
Thank you. I would like to say, in light of my current understanding of construction costs, I think it wouldn't be a bad thing if we didn't hold out for the full price. I mean, any, because that'll keep the housing affordable. When you, I, I just know that the more expensive it is to create the property, the more expensive it's ultimately going to be to rent it. And if it becomes less affordable, you'll be able to put on less units and we're in a massive housing desperation need. So I, I would, I would be happy to cast my vote in favor of taking what we've got right now and moving on it.
Thank you. That's helpful. And honestly, you know, if we are going to try to wring every dollar out of it, this property is never going to sell. Because that reservoir is going to be a beast to deal with. And I appreciate your flexibility on that.
Yeah, I took a tour of that property and looked down inside of it. It's just a dark thing full of water. And the walls were thick as all get out. And I'm thinking, this, you obviously said $400,000 might be a little bit low as far as the relation nowadays. I'm, so I support whatever decision that makes the best for the city. And so I guess, do you have any, I think Ray's good to go. Long as the legal ease is good, I think we should move.
Okay, so we'll bring back on a relatively quickly future agenda item, I think, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
So next thing on the agenda is the Parks Master Plan, Update and Revise Parks SDC Methodology. Director Ladain, are you going to speak to that today?
I am. Thank you and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Can you all hear me coming through? Yes, awesome. All right. So thank you for this opportunity to present to you today the 2021 Parks Master Plan and Updated SDC Methodology. This plan will replace the 2006 Master Plan, which laid out a 10-year vision. The current Master Plan process began back late, uh, and summer of 2019, under the previous Parks and Recreation Director. And the whole process at that point was anticipated to wrap up by December of 2020. So, as you all know, a lot has happened in the last 18 months. Not only was there a change in leadership, but delays occurred due to my maternity leave and then opportunities to align the plan with the Albany Waterfront Project Process and the Housing Needs Analysis. And then a pandemic hit and all sorts of changes happened, not only to our department and our community, but the Parks and Recreation industry overall. I want to thank MIG and the FCS Group, our staff and you council for your flexibility and patience over this long process. I feel that this plan is strong and well rooted into the realities of, in our, of our community, both its aspirations and in its limitations. We know not all the projects are going to get checked off the list in a timely fashion. And due to budget limitations, we were unable to check off all the ones from 2006. And so many of them in the pack have rolled over into this plan. However, we firmly believe that without a plan, we will never be ready to make improvements and seize opportunities that may come our way. We see this plan as our roadmap. And in regarding to SDC methodology, that's the second section we're going to be talking about tonight. First must apologize for my error and all the excitement about the Master Plan document. I failed to include the methodology in your packet on Friday. But you should have received the supplemental agenda today. The Albany Parks SDC methodology has not been updated since 1993. And as a result, this 28-year-old methodology does not reflect best practices. FCS Group will lay out the updated information for you a little bit later. But as a reminder, this is only for the methodology and not for the max allot. Woo, sorry. This is only for the methodology and not the max allowable amount. At this time, we are not asking you to approve an actual rate. With your feedback and recommendations, we'll go back to work and develop our new proposed rate that better aligns the identified community need projects. On the list, we're also balancing our current economic and community situation. So that's my long intro and I've talked way too much already. So I'm going to kick it over to Cindy Mendoza with MIG.
Great. Thank you so much, Kim. I'm going to share my screen so that you all can see our presentation. Mayor, council members and staff, we are really excited to be here today to present to you both the Parks Master Plan as well as the SDC Methodology. I'm joined here by my colleague John Giller-Gutti from FCS Group. We're going to share in this presentation. I will be talking to you about the Park Master Plan. He'll follow up with the SDC Methodology. Before we get into the details, I just want to let you know that there's a couple of different pieces here. Today's work session is really intended as a presentation of these two elements so that we can address any questions that you have. The next meeting, potentially as early as Wednesday, would come back to give you an opportunity to make the determination to adopt the Master Plan and the SDC Methodology. It's important to recognize that these are two separate documents, two separate elements that should be considered independently. They're presented here today jointly because there are some overlaps between the CIP that we use for the Mark Parks Master Plan as well as how that factors into the SDC Methodology update. But as Kim mentioned to you already, it is a completely separate conversation from the discussion that'll occur in the future about funding mechanisms and potential increases in the SDC rate. Parks Master Plan, as Kim mentioned, is updating a 2006 Master Plan and providing a five and 10-year CIP that's intended to inform future budgeting decisions. The SDC Methodology, again, replaces a very outdated 1993 Parks SDC Methodology, again, allowing council to make future decisions about the SDC rate. It's important to note, because of comments that we're receiving, that we are not asking council to vote in a large increase for the Parks and Recreation Department's budget. This actually is not tied to any specific decisions around budgets. That's a separate budgeting process that council will go through at a later time. Currently, what we're asking you to do is to adopt more up-to-date frameworks and a decision-making tool to, to guide those budget decisions. So very quickly, the planning process involved multiple phases. Started with a technical review of the park system, a look at your existing SDCs, an extensive community outreach process that was then checked by a technical needs analysis to identify project priorities and a funding and implementation strategy for the future. The Master Plan is organized into an executive summary in five chapters, as shown here. There's a lot of supplemental information that also appears in appendices to guide staff and decisions and providing the tools that they need moving forward, such as a prioritization criterion partnership checklist that they can use when partners or residents suggest projects to move forward. The planning process started out with an overview of the state of the system. We went into this with eyes fully open about what had been accomplished since 2006 and what remained to be done. The $5 million backlog of deferred maintenance projects, how COVID changed the trajectory of recreation over the course of this planning process, and even how the community continues to grow and already has an undeveloped backlog of parklands plus 880 acres to maintain. Wanted to make sure that this was based on community input and decisions. More than 1,600 people participated in the planning process. In addition to those voices, the project was also guided by our Parks Task Force that involved community members as well as the Park and Recreation Board and our project leadership team. And in online questionnaire, we ask about a variety of top priorities for funding Parks and Recreation projects. And these priorities were cross-checked against the results from a pop-up event where we went to several different existing activities in parks and allowed people who were at those activities to share their input because they often wouldn't necessarily participate in the planning process and other forums. Because of that, we know that the majority of people who responded to the online questionnaire feel that replacing and repairing old and worn park features is the top priority. The people who were out in your parks and on the riverfront, you know, at one of your concerts in the parks were indicating that protecting that riverfront is the top priority. But in general, many of the priorities were similar, definitely an emphasis overall in terms of building more trails and paths and addressing maintenance needs. Given the funding challenges, we wanted to have a clear understanding of the right level of investment that the city should be making in Parks and Recreation. It was a critical question, so we asked people independently to rate several different items to tell us whether the city should be spending less, about the same, or more than you are currently spending, just to get that gut check from residents on the right level of investment. And what we found in nearly all cases, the light green indicates the amount of people who were saying that a greater investment is needed. So we heard that loudly and clearly that residents would like to see an enhancement in the park and recreation system. But just because residents would like to see an enhancement doesn't necessarily translate directly into recommendations for an aspirational park system that's based on a lot of additional funding. We cross-checked what we heard from the community in a technical analysis of needs that looked at needs to sustain park assets to enhance existing parks and facilities. that looked at needs to sustain park assets, to enhance existing parks and facilities, address the needs for new growth, and even to work collaboratively with partners such as the YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club to leverage community resources to be able to enhance parks and recreation opportunities. And what we found is that there was a stronger case to be made for sustaining your existing level of service, not necessarily pouring in a lot of additional funds, but having the right amount of funds on hand to continue at this level as your community grows. But in addition to that, there are opportunities that the city has to be able to enhance parks, recreation and trails. So we also looked at independent options to streamline services, coordinate with the waterfront river vision, look at health, sports and fitness, knowing that especially through COVID, what a critical way parks have supported health and wellness through these last years. Looking at trail connectivity, which majority of which is led through transportation, and even looking at needs for equitable opportunities. From that basis, we started to look at what the proposed park system might look like. And what you'll see is that there are several new parks proposed. Those new parks, though, in general, are following the guidance from earlier plans such as the South Albany Plan that identified a number of sites for new neighborhood parks. We also see growing areas on the east side. We identified opportunities on the north side because of needs there to enhance an existing property for a new park. We also looked, as you see by the two red Xs, at two sites that were not needed to meet park needs and looking at divesting those to bring in resources for other projects. You'll also see a number of purple lines on this map. These are opportunities to enhance trail connectivity throughout the system. Again, a lot of these are based on providing trails along transportation rights of ways for ease of access. And so those were considered separately in the CIP. Besides focusing on those capital projects, new things to build and develop, we wanted to make sure we were looking system-wide at the maintenance resources needed to steward and take care of the park and recreation system, as well as the amazing events and programs that have made a difference in your community and certainly attract businesses and residents, and then coordinating with several existing plans, including looking at ADA needs. These translated into a series of recommendations that are somewhat aspirational, but more so focused on an existing investment needed in your existing sites. What you'll see from the graphic on the right is that we are focused on replacing play areas, for example, that are going to wear and age over the next 10-year planning horizon for this plan, looking at resurfacing sports courts, naturalizing several areas to reduce the maintenance needs associated with them, and then to a lesser extent, addressing the need for new amenities, capacity enhancement projects, as well as new park development. What that translated into is a larger ticket item over the next 10 years, 66.8 million potentially in park projects. We left that number high intentionally, creating a list of projects that can be supported by grants when grant funding is available, but then recognized that for a shorter five-year action plan, we needed a more realistic strategy with critical look at those projects to move forward. They were looking at potentially 8.2 million. Again, to be clear, this capital improvement plan that you've seen in the package that you received includes short, medium and long-term projects. So again, some opportunities that we heard that we assume will be well beyond the 10-year planning horizon for this plan. Again, the large CIP is intended to support and inform annual budgeting and work plan decisions. There is nothing to say in this plan that projects have to go forward in this short, medium and long-term phasing. It is prioritization based on the information we have now to guide the city as it looks to identify top priorities for preserving existing assets and addressing new growth as the community moves forward. As I mentioned earlier, trails are in a separate project list to be taken into account with regards to transportation funding. And the intent here is really to recognize that there have been several economic shifts since the project began. New growth might not proceed as rapidly as originally anticipated, so this is a flexible tool, again, allow you to make good decisions moving forward about how to advance projects. The five-year action plan focuses on 13 essential projects. Those projects are noted here. They look at the critical capacity enhancement projects, again, East Thornton Lake, the development of an existing site being one of those needs, and continuing to move forward with the Timber Ridge Neighborhood Park in an already growing and developing area for a city-owned property. Looking at a couple of projects that will increase efficiencies that are noted there, as well as some enhancement to existing sites, as well as partner sites, such as the Lynn Benton Community College pickleball courts that are already underway. And then the divestment of a couple of properties to save funds and then coordination with an ADA transition plan to ensure that you are meeting state and national requirements for accessibility. The plan includes some funding guidance. It does not include any specific directions of rates to be set or any budgets to provide. It simply acknowledges that the city needs to look at both capital funding to take care of the new things that you will build, parks to add, sites to acquire, facilities to add, and those require a different pool of funding than operations funding, which is how you maintain and steward your park system and provide programs and events and recreation opportunities. And because of that, it notes that it'll require a mix of things such as park system development charges and grants and fees and other sources, plus the look at citywide utility fee to enhance maintenance and operations, the look at recreation fees for programming, for example, that already feed into the revenues that support the park and recreation system. So these items are intended to provide a balanced approach to give you the guidance when it comes time to do your annual budgeting. The master plan was on review for two weeks for public comment. There were 30 people who clicked on the link to look at the plan, two submitted comments through our online forum. One was regarding a correction to the Oak Creek Open Space plus support for park divestment and volunteer involvement in neighborhood projects. However, we also then took the plan to the Parks and Recreation Commission in a joint meeting with our project task force and the Parks Foundation. There was a good conversation around it, questions about the CIP, which we've added those clarifications here, questions about that citywide utility fee and how that would help parks. But at the end of the meeting, after all questions, the Parks and Recreation Commission unanimously recommended this plan to you for approval. The Chair of the Parks Foundation did the same, and the task force members, not in an agreement that they felt that this provided good guidance moving forward. We are aware that the plan will need some minor changes, including some corrections of typographical errors, an update with regards to the Oak Creek Green Belt that is a larger space and with a different names will be changed, a move of the location of where a partnership project was noted for a hot tub at the pool, an update to the acknowledgements page to welcome our new council members and the current mayor who are now going to help shepherd this plan in the future. And then the addition that you don't see here on this slide is a couple of comments that came in today with regards to some updates to the demographic data, as well as a couple of graphics in the plan to provide clarity around those. With that, we are excited to present to you this master plan. And now we'll shift gears a bit to be able to talk about the SDC Methodology update, and we'll address all questions at the end of the presentation. So John, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Thank you, Cindy, and thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm joined by my associates Doug Gabbert and Zek Hazel, who did the technical heavy lifting on the SDC update and will be available if needed. You go to the next slide, please. The way that we have have set this up, I'll do a little bit of system development charge background, talk about the things that we have to consider when we do an update like this, summarize the calculation, which will result in the maximum legally defensible fee based on the information that that we have now. We have some comparative information for you as well. And with that, we can we can move ahead to the next slide. So key characteristics of system development charges, these these are the one-time fees paid at the time of development by new development. They're they're not to be confused with ongoing rates. Existing development does not pay SDCs unless they are redeveloping and increasing their demand on your systems. By law, system development charges are available for water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation and parks. Tonight, of course, our emphasis is on parks, but it's only those five services. System development charges are for capital only. So we we calculate them based on the cost of capital facilities and planned capital facilities, and you can only use the money on capital projects. We can't use them for operations, for example. SDCs, as you will see, they include an existing component and a future component. The existing component is based on facilities that have already been built, and the future component is based on planned facilities that will serve growth. And then finally, system development charges are for a share of system facilities, not local facilities. So if we were talking about water, we're not talking about the water meter, we're talking about a share of the reservoir or the transmission lines. Similarly, we're not talking about onsite amenities for parks, we're talking about a share of the public park system. You can advance the slide, please. We take great care to follow the law. The SDC Act is in ORS 223, 297 through 314. It gives us a really good recipe for how to calculate a system development charge. All the rules are there. There's also case law that has been, and the SDC Act has been in place effective since 1991. There have been cases and we follow the results of those cases very carefully as well. Next slide, please. The calculation framework is summarized here. That existing component that I mentioned is called the reimbursement fee, and it's labeled that way in statute. The way we calculate the reimbursement fee, it's a it we're simplifying it here, but basically what we're trying to do is isolate the cost or value of any unused capacity that's available for growth. And so, and this is in the system that's already been built. We take that cost of unused capacity and we divide it by growth, the expected growth in in system demand, and that gives us our reimbursement fee. For the improvement fee, a long list of planned capital projects like we have here. And what we what we have to do is isolate the portion of each project that will add capacity for growth. So for future users, if we're adding capacity to meet deficiencies or for the benefit of the existing population, we can't include it. It's just the growth share. And then we divide the sum total of those project portions by, again, the growth that we project that it will serve, and that gives us our improvement fee. So the system development charge is the two fees added together. It's intended to represent the share of parks' capacity that's needed to serve that next development. Some of it's already been built, some of it is still to be built, but it's all there for future users. So as we move into the numbers, and and I'll calculate that the calculation in just a minute, there are a few things to keep in mind as we as we look at the as we look at the results. First of all, what we're gonna show you is a is a schedule that would apply not only to residential new development, but also could be extended to apply to non-residential or commercial new development. We find that employees use parks, and they might be employees who come to Albany from other cities, use parks at lunch. And so there is an impact from non-residential users. Non-residential park SDCs are becoming more and more standard across the state, so we calculated them. The council may decide to charge both residential and non-residential, or just continue to charge residential development only. The results, as I mentioned, that we will show you will represent the maximum allowable charge under the law. The council can adopt anything up to those amounts, or they could also decide to phase in over a period of years up to that higher level in order not to shock the development community, financially shock them. The costs shown that you will see in these calculations, well, as they have to do with the improvement fee, are the SDC eligible costs, so they're not the total capital project lists. They are just the improvement fee eligible portions, that growth-related share, and you'll see what I mean in just a minute. So you can advance that, thank you. So sorry for the small print here, but this is everything you need to know about the calculated maximums, and I'll go through this line by line. The improvement fee, first row there, improvement fee cost basis at 34.6 million, that is just a a fraction of the total project list. It represents that portion of the list which can be allocated to future users. So that's the portion of the projects over the next 10 years that are that will serve future users or growth. That reimbursement fee cost basis, a little over $9 million there, that is unused capacity in the existing park system, the estimated cost of that unused capacity. What you see there is compliance costs. The law allows the city to recover the cost of administering the study and performing SDC studies over the years. So that's what that estimated cost is. Total basis, about 43.7 million. We're gonna take each of those cost bases and divide them by projected growth, and we're saying in demand-adjusted users. All that is is growth in population plus a fraction of expected increases in employment, adjusted as if they were population equivalents. So that 10 years of growth, about 10,700 population equivalents is what's forecasted. So we divide the improvement fee cost basis by that growth to arrive at the improvement fee per demand-adjusted user, 3,0234, the reimbursement fee, 850, and the compliance fee, $4, for a total per, and a demand-adjusted user is basically a population equivalent, one person, $4,088. So we convert that unit cost result to a fee schedule, and that's what you see at the bottom of this page, based on the average occupancy, except for employees, and I'll get to that in a minute. So for a single-family dwelling unit, average occupancy, 2.61. The resulting maximum park SDC, 10,685. For a multifamily dwelling unit and an accessory dwelling unit, you see the average occupancies are lower, and so the resulting SDCs are lower. The park SDC for an employee, 11 cents, is not applied by the number of employees. When a new commercial development comes in for a permit, you look at the land use and the square footage, and using industry standards, you can estimate the number of employees, and that's how you calculate. So it's actually a square footage-based charge converted from 11 cents per employee. So you could go to the next slide, please. Oh, and one thing I forgot to mention about the reimbursement fee. One of the advantages of having a reimbursement fee is the spending rules are different. For the improvement fee, you can only spend that money on growth-related, capacity-increasing portions of projects. The reimbursement fee gives you more flexibility. You can spend that money on any park capital project, whether it's growth-related or not. So I neglected to mention that earlier. Just to give you a sense of where that result Just to give you a sense of where that result fits in with what the city's already charging, here is Albany's current SDC schedule for all of its charges. It doesn't charge for stormwater, so you see transportation, water, wastewater, and parks shown here. The current park SDC is applied per bedroom and by square footage. So for a 1,500-square-foot, three-bedroom house, the current park SDC in Albany is 1,720. So obviously, that calculated maximum would represent a significant increase. You can move ahead to the next one, please. So we've tried to give you a snapshot of some cities and park districts around the state. Some close by, others not so much. Many of them, as you see here, do charge a non-residential park SDC. Park SDCs are one of the SDCs that vary the most around the state. We've seen them increase substantially in some areas, and then we still have some that are comparatively very low. So you see a sample here, and where the maximum allowable charge, this is for a single-family residence because they're the easiest to compare. Where that maximum allowable charge would place Albany on this list, a pretty big jump there. Many of these cities have, or districts, have not adopted the fully defensible fee. Happy Valley, for example, that calculated maximum was over $20,000, and they adopted something close to a third of that a couple of years ago. So, and many of these have done or will do the same. Corvallis is considering a significant increase right now, and we don't know where that, or if that will land. So as far as the review steps, as per statute, the written SDC methodology with all these calculations and more detail about the numbers has been available for review for the last 60 days. The city has received no written comments. We did participate in a special meeting with the Chambers Government Affairs Committee. We received comments at that time about affordability, about the non-residential components. Some of those you see addressed in the material I just presented. We did receive a couple of comments after we had put this PowerPoint together this afternoon, so we weren't able to address those in the PowerPoint. And that is, that's all our prepared material. Scott, my name's John, and you see Doug's name here. He's also available if needed.
So we're happy to address any questions that you have regarding either the methodology or the master plan update.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor, you're still muted.
Turn on your mic, Alex.
It's frozen.
Here, your mic is muted.
Grab your phone.
There he goes.
Sorry about that. My mouse was like jumping all over the screen. Thank you very much for the presentation. I greatly appreciate it. I'm sure the councillors have questions. I will open it up for questions to my council. Did you have anything? Who would like to go first?
I would.
Go ahead, please. Was it Bessie?
Yeah, this is Bessie. Yeah. Appreciate the presentation. With, regarding the, well, first of all, in the master plan is saying that you need $5.6 million to develop only the first phase of East Thornton Lake, and I think that should be way at the bottom of the list because we've got a lot more important things than that. Also, with the SDC charges, I just don't, I don't want to include a number of employees for non-residential into it. That just doesn't make sense to me because it just should be for residential because if they're working here, a lot of them live here, so they'd be paying twice in a sense. Also, we need, in the plan, I'm hoping that instead of doing anything in the south of the river, we need to go east of the freeway, east Albany, where all the schools and the new developments are. We need to concentrate on that first, I think. I don't believe, other than the Timberland Park, you know, that's the only one. I mean, it's big and everything, but I think we should concentrate on that. And then also, I think we need to fix and replace the equipment, playground equipment and things like that that we have, if we can. And so my suggestion would be to go ahead and pass the, you know, the parks' master plan, but to put a hold on the SDC charges and stuff so that we can see, you know, later. We have new councillors and everything, but that way, if we pass the plan, I believe we could kind of, we can apply for grants for different projects. I'd have to look more, you know, would want you to look more into that, but I don't think we should go into the SDC decision right now. So I would say pass the master plan, but not the SDCs. Thank you.
Any other councillor that would like to say anything?
Yep. I just want to second that. I think that, I was thinking the same thing. It makes an awful lot of sense to go ahead and allow the city to adopt the master plan but exclude the financial recommendations at this time, you know? Just because there's been a little bit of weighing in, but not a lot, and we are a new council. And I think Bessie's right. I think that if you pass it, then there's opportunity to apply for grants, and that would be good. So that's, I'm just kind of seconding that.
So I think the city manager has something you'd like to add to this.
I just want to make sure that people understand that what we're presenting is not an approval of a financial question. This is a methodology. So it's not the case that you're buying into a set level of SDCs. What you're doing is approving a methodology that's used to come up with the number, and then you, at a later date, the council writ large has to approve what those SDCs are. Nobody's asking, the staff are not asking for an approval of SDCs tonight, but rather an approval of the methodology for creating them. And then you would have to approve the actual amount at a later date.
Thank you, Peter. Do you have something, councillor Olson?
I was just clearing my throat, but yes, I do. It seems like the price tag on this plan are awfully high, and I think it's awfully optimistic to think that we can come up with that kind of money. And about the SDCs, does the, I don't know what the bottom cost for a house is anymore. Maybe, what is it, $150,000, $200,000? Can you get that low? And does the SDC on that house, is it the same as the 3/4 million house that we see some places in North Albany, Coon Lane, places like that? Of course, I don't know if they're in the, they're not in the city limits, so I guess they wouldn't get charged. But how about that? Is it the same SDC for every house that's built?
Director, Director Ladain?
I was going to pass that one to John, if that's all right.
I'll be fine.
Yeah, happy to do it. Yes, under the proposed approach, any single-family residence, any new single-family residence would pay the same SDC because we can't really tell at the time of construction how many occupants are going to be in that house, and that's our best measure for future use of parks. So we approach it uniformly.
Well, I knew that. I just wanted to clear it up, make sure that everybody realizes that we do have, we do have a housing shortage in the low end of the housing cost range. And I think this will just accelerate, exacerbate is probably a better word, the cost of the low-range housing. I'd like to find another method to finance this if we can, although I don't know as the other alternatives are that much better.
Councillor Cupset, did you have anything? Nothing? Okay. Councillor Olson, just, Councillor Johnson. Councillor Smith, did you have anything?
I just wanted to mention that we did receive two comments today about the SDCs. Written comments that we seem to receive this afternoon, so that's an update.
I mentioned that earlier.
Right. I was just updating that in line of the consultant's report.
So my input is, thank you, councillor Smith. One of my concerns is that a SDC on a home that costs $150,000 is, should not be the same as a SDC on a $700,000 house. Because it doesn't do anything for the builder. He's going to spend $15,000, just $15,000 on a $150,000 house. A $350,000 house, which house is he going to build? So I think we need to revisit that aspect because if you're going to build a home for $150,000 and it costs $15,000, build a $400,000 house and it costs $15,000, the builders are not going to build a $150,000 house.
Yeah. Good point.
We cannot, they will not be incented to build a $150,000 house because it's going to cause them to say, to build a $350,000 house, they're already going to build. So we need to revisit that aspect of it. I didn't know that was part of, everybody's paying the same SDC because now you just told all the builders, build expensive homes. And we have to come up with a way to incentivize builders to build housing that's affordable to young couples, young families. And by having the SDC the same for a $150,000 house, you're pretty much giving them part-bunch to build expensive homes. That causes more of a problem. So I think we need to go back to the drawing board and look at that from a different perspective. I didn't have anything else. Any other councillor want to comment? Councillor Johnson?
Yeah, Alex, I was just going to say, you know, maybe best idea would be to move along with the parks' plan and then just table the SDC part of it so that we can look more into it. You know, I was looking at that, Happy Valley is like $7,000 or something like that. Well, Happy Valley has, I mean, that's, you don't live there unless you have money. And so to see that it actually is only a third of what it could do, maybe we need to kind of, you know, relook into it too. So we can't move anything tonight, but I think Wednesday, I'd probably wish to go forward with the parks' plan but to table the SDCs until we can get more information. Thank you.
So I have a question for you, city. Thank you, councillor Johnson. Peter, so it doesn't spell out in this, what I read, I read this packet three times since we received it. It doesn't spell out that, I didn't see anywhere in here that said that everybody's paying the same SDC. It's because, has that been a part of your discussions?
I would have to turn that back to John. The question, if I understand you correctly, is, is it scalable? Can you assess SDCs at a scalable rate from low to high so that you spread the burden out? Kind of like income taxes graduated to make it more progressive.
Yes, that's what I mean, that's what I mean. Because one of the things I'm concerned about mostly is that if a builder comes and says, I want to build 250 homes at $150,000, but I have to pay $150,000, I'll just buy, build 100 homes or 300, it'll pencil out.
Mayor, I think I have the, an understanding, and I would ask John what his input is, if he's seen that before.
Thank you, and you're hitting on a very hot topic in the SDC community, if you will, right now, and the effect on affordable housing. The problem is, we are constrained by statute to use rate-making principles when we calculate a system development charge. So the fact that someone in a much more expensive home can afford a system development charge more than someone in a much lower-priced new home doesn't matter. What matters is how much they use the parks. And if we had data that said that larger homes, more expensive homes used parks more than smaller homes and cheaper homes, then we could make them scalable. In fact, the city's SDC structure is scalable right now. But there really isn't good information out there that would tell us that larger, more expensive homes use parks more. In fact, I would argue they probably use parks less. So that's the problem that we have with trying to scale SDCs to assessed values or something like that. There are other ways to try and address affordability, and some of them have been addressed in statute by providing for a portion of a construction excise tax to buy down SDCs for affordable housing. A number of cities do that across the state. I guess the one thing that I might suggest for consideration is that the methodology is sound. If you don't like the number, which I can, I fully understand, it's an eye-popping result, the council can adopt a number much lower than that. And if they leave the project list intact and adopt the plan, then the city has the flexibility to spend that SDC money on any of the projects on that list as they prioritize over time. If you start pulling projects off the list to try and make that number lower, you won't be able to spend the SDCs that you do generate on as many projects, only those projects that remain on the list. So a couple of additional thoughts there. Thank you for listening.
I appreciate it, John. Councillor Olson?
Yes, I'm wondering if Mr. Jared Dillard-Duchy's plan is available in print? I was not able to, but it shows on the screen, my little screen, the slides are even smaller, and I can't read them. So I'm wondering if the report is available in print.
I think Kim has the answer to that. We've provided it in PDF form, but I'm sure it could be made available. Is that right, Kim?
I can work with the city clerk to see if we can make an accommodation.
It's not, it's not in this 80-some pages of stuff here, is it? How many more pages would it be?
About 20.
20?
20.
Okay. Well, it'd be interesting to look at.
Can I make one quick comment? And I know we've kind of chatted about this, and I completely understand that the $10,000 is a big jump. And I can say, from the person who's leading the department, we are hoping nowhere near that amount. We realize that that would be astronomical and detrimental to our community. And so that goes the difference between the methodology review, which is just saying this is sound practice, as opposed to a conversation that we will come back to later. So if you do not pass the methodology tonight, it doesn't necessarily give staff on our part the opportunity to go back and start really doing the hard work to try to try to figure out what that number could be for our community. Instead, if we push it off, we're just gonna have to come back again at a later point and essentially provide this exact same information, in the hopes that you will tech off on it, so that then we can actually go to try to, to propose a rate to be adopted. I hope that makes sense. Um, this is just kind of procedural at this point. It isn't us trying to attach any dollars to it. And I can absolutely guarantee you, we will be nowhere near, nowhere near the amount, um, that is our maximum allowable.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to suggest we put this off until we can have real meetings with our public, uh, after this virus thing gets over. Hopefully that will happen sometime. And, uh, y- you know, a lot of this is brand-new stuff to me, and I've, I've been around for the last forty-eight years, so. Uh, I'd like to have a real meeting with my constituents before we make decisions, particularly on the financial part of it. I think we ought to, uh, adopt the, uh, the plan of what we'd like to do, if we can afford to do it. But, uh, as far as the money is concerned, I think we ought to, I would like to see us put it off. Thank you.
Counselor Novak?
Yeah, so just to get some clarity myself, is it possible to adopt the master plan and the methodology, and not specifically the financing? And, and make it so that you, okay, good, because then you could look for grants as well to help finance, right?
Counsel, Counsel Novak, you're exactly right. That's what they're asking for. And I think, I support this, accepting the methodology and also the master plan. And then they're gonna have to do some work and come back and bring us.
Okay. Okay. So we don't have to adopt the financing at this moment. We can talk about the financing down the road. Good, good. No one's looking for that. Okay, good. Thank you for clarifying.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you. Uh, as we're considering adopting the master plan on, and, um, I just wanted to draw your attention to a sentence that caught my eye on page forty-nine of the agenda packet in the master plan. This, uh, this says a lot to me about what parks mean for us, and we should be thinking about this when we're thinking about the money part of it eventually. One of the most visible public services in the city of Albany, the Parks and Recreation System is an ongoing investment in the identity of a community and the quality of life of residents. Please keep that in mind.
Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counsel Smith. Council? Would you like to add?
Okay.
I move that we approve the methodology and the parks master plan.
Second.
Um.
On Wednesday, on, or today?
Thank you, Peter. Tonight being a, tonight being a work session, uh, it's teed up for your discussion and your questions to our consultants and to Director Ladain. You'll have another chance on Wednesday to actually vote to approve it. Um, both of, both methodology and the master plan.
Does, I have a question, another question.
Go ahead, Counsel Novak.
Oh, thank you. Does that methodology include the employees?
It, it does, but that, but you could still adopt, you could still adopt a methodology without that non-residential component.
Okay, because I would.
Covers both.
I, I don't wanna, I don't think we should adopt the methodology with that component.
So the methodology is just kind of the whole menu, and then you'll be able to pick and choose what you want us to run with. Um, so it's, it's just saying, these are all the things that we're gonna consider moving forward next time, and it'll be up to you if you want to include it or not.
So what I, what I would like to see is the methodology with, with and without that in it. See the numbers with it, without it. What do you, how, how do you guys feel about that?
Okay, I, yeah, I'm still leery about including the employees.
If you look at the number.
Make a couple of clarifications.
For the employees, that's gonna make a, a very, very small difference in the overall total.
Well.
So let's, so I think Cindy had a question. Go ahead, Cindy.
Um, really, it's a point of clarification. So right now, you're working from a nineteen ninety-three methodology that is completely outdated to make good decisions. What we're asking you to do is to adopt a new methodology that is more legally defensible and sound and brought up to date. Once that methodology is adopted, you can decide to charge the same rate that you currently have. It does not imply in any way that an increase needs to occur. So it gives you the flexibility, though, over time, to increase your rate or to add a non-commercial fee associated with that. But it does not imply that you have to do that. We're, we're simply asking today is, bring your methodology more up to date to give the city the best tool moving forward in determining how and what to charge for SDCs.
Counselor Smith?
We did something like that with transportation's, uh, SDCs a few years ago. Established a five-year process of ramping things up for to make it more easy to swallow.
So I think we should, we should have them bring back the proposal on Wednesday. We can talk about it and vote on it then. That sound good to everyone?
Yeah, okay.
Because they, we do have flexibility in making changes if we'd like to. But I would like to see it with the numbers with the employees and without. And that makes sense. I think that would make sense to everybody. Are we good?
Yeah.
Everybody's good?
Uh, this is Gabe Chep, sorry, excuse me, this is Gabe, the recorder. Uh, Counselor Kupcinski still has the motion on the table with a second one.
Uh, I will withdraw, I will withdraw that motion.
Thank you, Counsel Kupcinski. The next on the agenda, so we're moving on to the next thing on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one, could I ask one question? This is Bessie. Um, is it possible too, for more clarity, to like, take, actually do the, um, what, put the methodology to, like, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house and a four hundred thousand dollar house, and actually put it in print, so that we can see what the difference is? You know, rather than just put all these numbers out there, and it's just, I mean, SDCs have always been a strange animal to figure out. So if we could have any clarity in something like that, I think that would help. Thank you.
Is that something you guys have to do for us, with Cindy and, um, John?
I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, I'm not, if it's just adding the, well, I, I, I think I don't understand the, uh, the request there. Sorry.
I, I think Counsel Johnson, if I'm not correct, if I'm wrong, looking for an example, like you put a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house and put the charges, give us a showing of what that would look like.
I think that confusion, if I understand it, is that the charges are the same for each single-family home, regardless of the size of the home.
Correct, that's correct. You did mention that earlier.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, so we're gonna come back Wednesday with a plan for us to look at. Uh, Peter?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Okay, five twenty, the next thing on the agenda is procedural changes for Albany City Council meetings. Um, Holly has brought something back for us to take a look at. So, Holly, you have the floor?
Uh, on page ninety of your agenda packet is this item. Consider opportunities. Are you unable to hear me?
Kind of go in and out.
Cutting in and out.
I'll, let me know if that continues. So on January eleventh, the mayor had asked that we, uh, as staff, come back with opportunities to realize some greater meeting efficiency and provide some recommendations back to the city council. So that following Wednesday, the city manager outlined several recommendations uh, for key areas, uh, related to meeting efficiency. The first being, uh, moving the start time, uh, on Wednesday, city council meetings from seven fifteen PM to six PM. Uh, establishing a sec, a standard adjournment time of nine PM, unless a majority of the council voted to extend the meeting. Uh, staff will plan accordingly to try to maintain a three-hour agenda, uh, so that we can realize that schedule whenever possible, the same way that we currently plan to keep our work sessions limited to two hours. Uh, the third item being establishing a registration process for business from the council, I'm sorry, business from the public, excuse me, uh, which we actually do currently, uh, COVID-nineteen enforcing us to virtual meetings, as required that we have a registration process in order to keep the meeting, meetings moving freely. So this would be continuing that process, uh, in our current format, online, and then once we go back to in-person meetings, continuing with it. Uh, and also limiting verbal testimony under business from the public to three minutes per person. Uh, residents would be able to provide written material to support, uh, that three-minute presentation, just as they do currently. And then the fourth item was establishing time limits for public hearings, which is a fairly common practice uh, for other cities in Oregon. That piece is not included today. We are still working, the city clerk and I, on language to bring back to you. So what is included today are two, uh, separate items. One is an ordinance, uh, to amend the municipal code in order to allow council to set their meeting times by resolution that make the AMC more generic, uh, so that we aren't coming back to changing municipal code. For example, you wanted to change it back to seven fifteen PM down the line, uh, that would require another code change. But this one-time code change says that you'll set your meeting times by resolution. And then the accompanying resolution that goes with that establishes both a six PM start time and a nine PM standard adjournment time, unless there's a majority of the council wanting to continue with the meeting. Uh, so that's one piece. Those are on the Wednesday agenda for your consideration for adoption. We don't need action on those tonight. But if you had any feedback, anything you wanted us to incorporate as changes, and you wanted to give that direction as a council, please do so. The second piece is, uh, we can do with direction from the mayor. My understanding from speaking with Mayor Johnson is that, um, he wants to go ahead and move with these, but we were looking for that formal direction in this meeting, if possible. And that is to implement the business registry for pu- business from the public, I'm sorry, the, the registry for business from the public. To bring over that one. Um, as well as the three-minute per person, uh, time limit on business from the public. So with that, I'll, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Council?
Yes.
I was gonna go, Bessie, Counsel Johnson has a question?
Yes, I do. Um, regarding the written material, and counselors in the past, we've all dealt with this, where someone comes to the business from the public and they give us, like, twenty, thirty pages of stuff that we don't have a chance to read ahead of time. So is there a way of saying that, uh, written material should be given before they come to the meeting? Or, uh, is there any way that we could, you know, kind of rein that in a little bit? Because there's no way that we can, what they're talking about, we can read at the same time, so. I know we don't have to make a decision at the time, so, you know, whatever, uh, the others decide, but I just wanted to bring it up.
Can't hear you, Holly.
Holly, can you hear you?
How about now?
That's better.
Okay, so that would certainly be the idea, and what we would encourage residents to do. Uh, we would allow them to send that materi- we would notify them that they could certainly send that material in advance, especially if it's lengthy and we'll distribute it to the council, and there's probably a better chance the council will review it ahead of time if, if they have the opportunity to do so, instead of handing it out at the meeting. So that would give us the opportunity to prompt that person to send those materials in advance, if possible.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Counselor Kupcinski, do you have anything?
Yes, uh, back in the good old days, when we were able to have face-to-face meetings, I visited a couple of, uh, meetings, uh, attended a couple of Corvallis City Council meetings over the fire station. And they had a rather unique process for timing. They would have the three lights, red, green, and yellow. And they would, you know, they would, when the light reached, uh, about thirty seconds before, the, uh, the yellow light came on, and then the red light came on, and it was very, very effective, I thought. Uh, now how they're doing that with, uh, COVID rules, I don't know, but I think that was a methodology that we could possibly consider. So that's all I have.
Counsel Olson?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Ray if he understood what the person was trying to say that was limited to three minutes, or we're just watching the lights to see if they're going to get told to shut up and sit down sooner or later.
Well, it never came to pass. They came pretty close. But there were people, you can tell pretty easily when people are just rambling. It's very, very, very easy to detect, I think, but that's just a point of view.
So I'd like to make a comment. Counsel Olson, I've been on the council for two years now, starting my third year, and Mayor Canop, my predecessor, no city council ever told anyone to shut up and sit down. And so I think using that language is inflammatory. I don't, I don't care for it. Start, go ahead.
Well, I'd like to answer this.
Yes.
Um, for, for one thing, and, uh, you probably say, well, he deserved it. But not, not Albany City Council meetings, but other meetings, I have, in quote, been told to shut up and sit down. I didn't appreciate it. And, um, uh, the tendency is, when you do that to people, they say, well, okay, I'll show you. And, uh, I've seen that happen. And the other thing, what I want to make is, uh, this perks program we've just been talking about, we're doing a lot of talking about getting support and monetary support from the public. And I, I think we're shortchanging ourselves by changing the meeting time to where it's difficult to get to the meeting for a person that has to work for a living. And the second, uh, factor is, I think, if he does manage to get there, and you tell him, you only got, you've only got three minutes, uh, I, I think you're going to lose support from the public. And, uh, I know I've felt that way, City of Albany meetings, uh, long time ago, not recently, but a long time ago. Of course, I haven't felt that way recently, because I've been sitting on the, on the other side of the dais. And, uh, not always, but I'm usually interested in what the public is trying to say. So I think we need to be careful of the public.
I, I totally agree, Counsel Olson. One of the things I'm looking for is meeting efficiency. And so if we put, people send their stuff in, we'll have a chance to digest it and read it before, we, we can't, we're expected to make decisions on it.
That's an excellent recommendation.
The person can actually formalize their thoughts on cue cards, and, and have a sharp conversation in three minutes. We're not telling people to shut up and sit down. I've never seen anybody in Albany, I've lived in for twenty-six years, do that to anyone. I'm sorry that it happened to you. So.
You haven't been on our council very long.
I, I get that. I totally understand that. But I don't want that to happen for the city, but I mean, nobody else in this, in this conversation does either.
Yeah, well, I don't want it to happen on future councils either.
I agree, hundred percent. So Counselor Novak, do you have anything? No? Counselor Smith, do you have anything?
No.
Uh, Counselor Kupcinski, have you got anything else? And that looks like we're done with that piece. But, Holly, Wednesday, can you bring that back to us, take a look at?
Yes, it's in your agenda packet, first, for the first reading of the ordinance, uh, and adoption of the resolution. So that, those are in your packet for action on Wednesday.
I do have one more request. Um, when, when you, when a person has something to present, I'd rather our staff, um, have control of that document, because what can happen is, you lose control of the meeting by having somebody else put, share their screen. And so if that's possible, if we can have that, where the people send their presentations to the city staff, and then you guys put the slides up for them. So maintaining positive control. That makes sense?
Connect offline with the city manager on that and coordinate as we need to.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Uh, next thing on the agenda is- Uh, next thing on the agenda is business from the council. Counselors, who would like to go first?
I will. Unless somebody else jumped in ahead of me.
Oh, go ahead, Councilor Novak. You go ahead and go.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to, um, thank staff and also, um, Julie Jackson at Republic. I had some constituents reach out to me recently, um, with concerns about leaves that got missed and now it's gonna be taken care of and I'm so grateful and they're gonna be so grateful and I just appreciate with what speed this took place. I just brought their concerns recently and, um, um, I think I said last time about the gentleman who was very happy about the park being cleaned up, the Dave Clark Trail. So that's all I have, but, um, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Olson, do you have anything, sir?
Um, I'd like to ask if, uh, Kara was able to, uh, figure out a way to forgive or, um, delay the interest payments on, uh, the people who have borrowed money from Kara and particularly eating establishments whose, uh, income has been, uh, really heavily curtailed because of the virus. We asked about that at the Kara meeting. Has Kara been able to do that? Do we know? City manager?
No, we, we don't know yet and we'd be happy to bring that back at, uh, the next Kara meeting and, or I can contact each of you individually as well when I have an answer for you.
Well, okay, I, uh, I'm wondering if, uh, people are, they're kind of on the edge of going broke and, uh, you know, every month counts.
It does. Thank you for that, Councilor Olson. Thank you very much for that. Uh, Councilor Johnson, do you have anything?
Um, yes, I do. Um, I'm glad, uh, Councilor Novak brought up the garbage. Um, we hadn't, haven't had an issue, don't know how long it's been going on, but we've had a, a mentally challenged, uh, person who's been going through our neighborhood and taking our garbage out of our cans and just kind of putting it in the ditch. And then also, um, lady caught her going through the mailboxes, so, uh, right now the garbage is on the neighbor's ditch to the north of us and was told not to, uh, because I was just gonna clean it up because I, I was walking to the little store and I thought, oh gee, they have this, eat the same ice cream bars I do. Well, it was my garbage, so, um, but the police said not to, not to pick it up because of needles and stuff like that, but it's still there, so, um, I, I don't know how long it's gonna take to, uh, get it rid of. But anyway, so that, that's an issue. So I, I called, uh, I wrote Jenna, um, Jaeger today to make sure that the city W-two statements hadn't been sent out yet and she said they had not because I don't know what we haven't got. So, uh, it's just an issue that's in our neighborhood and they said that she was arrested finally, but, um, it's an ongoing thing here, so, um, hopefully, hopefully it will end, but, um, you know, I guess people just have to be on the lookout for your neighbors to make sure and, I mean, thank God the lady came out and says, no, you can't do that, it's federal law. So, um, she was, she was caught and put in jail for a little while anyway, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilor Kupczynski, or, excuse me, Councilor Smith?
Nothing this evening.
Councilor Kupczynski?
Nothing.
Um, thank you for that. Um, I just had one thing, um, since I was elected, um, I've been making relationships, contacts with mayors from all over the state. And this weekend, uh, Councilor, Councilor Kupczynski and I were discussing measure one-ten and a few other things. We might want to look at that closer because measure one-ten will have some impact on us or Texas. So, um, I've talked to Peter about it, he's gonna bring us back, bring some information to us. Hopefully, we'll ask some information on the impact of measure one-ten to our budget. But, and other than that, I'll just say, I'm, I think I'm done for the evening. And, uh, city manager, you have something for us?
Could I add one, Your Honor?
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilor Smith, Olson, go ahead.
Yeah, it, I just remembered, uh, today I got a letter from the federal government with my, um, I guess you call it economic encouragement letter, uh, with money to add, um, because of the COVID problem. And, uh, my mail lady knocked on the door to remind me, uh, not to throw this away because it looks very much like junk mail. And I don't know if any of the other, of, of the other of you have gotten that yet, but it's got a little credit card thing in it. And so for the time being, open your mail and make sure you're not throwing it away because she said some people on Harrow Road have thrown those away and they're trying to get it back. And, um, I don't know how much money it is, if it's fourteen hundred or something like that. It's too much money to throw away and-
That's good, that's good, Councilor Olson. Can we get something like that on the website? Is that possible, Holly?
Uh, boy, I don't know how to do it, but, um, uh, maybe, uh, some of the other of you that do know how could, uh, put it on.
Well, I'll say that, uh, Matthew Harrington is listening to this, so if there's a way that we can do that, uh, we'll-
I can bring mine in and show you what it looks like, if that would help.
I have seen warnings from the postal service about that too, so.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just, and I hope there's some of the public listening and hears that, so.
I'm sure it's going around to people watching on YouTube as well, so thank you very much, Councilor Olson. That's a great public service announcement.
Sorry to break in.
So, um, uh, city manager, you have anything for your report today?
Just, uh, just to remind you all, you don't need a reminder. You know that we have interviews till, at four o'clock. It's going to be a fairly long meeting, so this week is a fairly long week for you all, so thank you for all the time you're putting in this week. And that's all.
I'll try and tune in around noon, see if I can be on time.
I was gonna say, do, do we get dinner, Peter? No? Oh, man. All right, see you tomorrow.
I'm still looking forward to feeding everyone. I mean, in-person eating together.
For the staffers here working hard for us and keeping the city safe, uh, thank you much for attending tonight and I will say, I'll bid you all good night.
Good night.